This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Special Meeting on Tuesday, September 25, 2012 at just past 6:30 PM. We are in Room 4 Riverside Township Hall, 27 Riverside Road. Welcome. Residents and visitors are welcome to all meetings of the Village Board. Comments and suggestions on any topic are welcome at any regular meeting. At special meetings, which this is, public comments are also welcome, but the Village Board is limited to addressing issues that are listed on this meeting's agenda. And this meeting's agenda is to consider the 2013 budget for the Village of Riverside. Comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda, or if the comments pertain to an agenda item at the time that item comes up for discussion. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address so that the village clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. So, welcome to the residents who are with us today. This meeting is not being televised live. It is a special meeting and was not on broadcast schedule, but it is being taped, so it will be available on Channel 6 later in the week. It will be at the Village of Riverside Public Library on DVD and it also will be on our Village website at a later time. So, welcome to everybody who's here, to those who will tune in later on to listen. It's always important and we'd like your input as we deal with the financial issues of the village. So with that, I will ask our village clerk to please call the board.
Trustee Sussman, here. Trustee Self, here. Trustee Reynolds, here. Trustee Shubas, here. Trustee Valeran, here. Trustee Sachi, here. President Forman, here. Also President Village Manager, Ms. Salera.
Thank you. Now, we have a form, so we shall proceed. First, I order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and since this is our new village clerk's first meeting, I will ask Ms. Haley to please lead us on the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin, I will ask if there are any members in the audience that care to address the board at this time. Seeing no one, we shall proceed. I will first ask trustee Sachi to introduce the matter for this evening and read the Agenda History sheet, and he will then turn the meeting over to Village Manager Salera for a presentation.
Thanks, Mike. The item for discussion tonight is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2013. At the August Board meeting, a 10-year capital improvement plan and a 5-year management forecast was presented to the board. During this meeting, the Village Board instructed staff to evaluate increasing the ambulance rate, evaluate E911 fund sharing, a portion of the dispatchers' personnel costs, evaluate an increase in utility tax, and to present a balanced budget. The Village Board, at the December 17, 2012 Board meeting, reviewed and discussed what recommended capital be included in the budget for fiscal year 2013. Proposed budget for fiscal year 2013 incorporates the capital and policy instructions by the Village Board. Staff has worked diligently to present a balanced budget to the Village Board. The progression and policy changes are attached to this Agenda History in addition to detailed budget schedules across all funds and departments. The budget document will be presented to the Village Board at U of L. And with that, Peter, you will do a presentation.
Okay. Well, good evening and welcome to the Village of Riverside 2013 Budget Workshop. Ron and I called each other just because you guys are curious. We did call each other and think we were going to wear our sweater about. The budget that you have before you is the main policy document of the village, and one of the most important, as it identifies the services to be provided and how the services are to be financed. The total 2013 proposed budget for all funds includes revenues totaling $15,2057, with expenditures totaling $15,777,852, with a difference of $577,276. Based on the board's review of capital projects in 2013, capital projects will be carried out in the capital projects, E911, water, sewer, and parking lot funds. Although we began our budget process with a significant deficit, I am pleased to present you with a balanced budget as I was directed. In general, the village's revenue stream remains constrained by property tax limits, a small commercial property tax base and legislation limiting tax revenue. The village is primarily residential with a very small commercial component. The property tax revenue is stable and reliable. However, because of the non-home rule tax cap, growth in revenue is small and limited to growth in the annual consumer price index. The December 2011-2012 CPI was 3%, which is the amount that we will be able to increase our property tax levy for 2013 property tax revenue. The primary purpose of the village government is provision of services. As a result, personnel costs continue to be our largest area of expenditure at 70% of the general fund budget and 41.5% of the overall budget. Before we begin our review of the proposed budget, I would like to recognize Finance Director Jessica Francis, who has put in a number of hours in helping me draft the budget in that before you. She has remained patient with me throughout this process, and I am very fortunate to have her as part of our team. I also would like to acknowledge the hard work of our entire staff, Chief Whitekill, Chief Nemora, Director Bailey, Director Carver, Director Malakiati, Deputy Chief Cool, and Deputy Chief Buckley, who also worked together to share in the push for the balanced budget that you have before you. And so I thank you all, gentlemen, for your assistance with that. So with that, we will begin our PowerPoint. Before you, I've provided a handout that has slides. Everyone should be happy. It's 12 slides. I have been doing one slide, so. Basically, today, we will provide an overview of the budget process, review the village manager's recommended budget, and review and discuss any questions you may have concerning the general fund revenues, expenditures, or if you want to go by department, we can do that as well, as well as the review of other funds. The process that was followed began early on in the year here when Jessica and I started looking at this fiscal year 2012 budget and kind of coming up with ideas on how we wanted to put this budget that you have before you together. That eventually led to the department heads submitting their requests to Jessica, Jessica including that into a format that we were able to review, and then going through those requests to see which ones could be included and which ones could be deferred, as well as which ones we have questions on. Following that, I reviewed all of their requests and individually went through the budget process to identify the areas that I felt were, should be included, and what can be held off on. And then what you have before you is the proposed budget. It is a suggested spending plan using available resources within the Village Board policy parameters that was given to me. And tonight, as well as then, prior to approval, if maybe, we have it tentatively scheduled for October 15th, the Village Board can make any final policy decisions. But our hope is that after tonight's meeting, we'll be able to answer all of your questions and spend the remaining time, month, preparing the final document for approval in U of L. So, a brief overview of all the funds. The table up here shows what was being proposed in 2013, what was budgeted in 2012, and the percent change from the two fiscal years. We'd like to note that the financing, the 525, that is for the debt refunding that we will be bringing back to you, and then the transfer in of 27299 is the final repayment to the E911 fund for the wireless alarm system that we've implemented. The next slide provides a pie chart that kind of gives you, that shows the breakdown of revenue by type. From here, you can see that a majority of our revenue is derived from property taxes. The next slide provides a comparison, year to year, of revenue for the different items. The next slide is the 2013 fund balance change. So basically, this was what we anticipate for revenue for next fiscal year, what, based on the department requests and my review, what I'm proposing as the expenditure for next fiscal year, and the 577 is where we began to do the review. The next slide is another pie chart that kind of shows the expenditures by department. The next slide is basically a step-by-step progression that was included in the packet, but basically, we began with the 572. These were some of the things that we were able to find, which brought our deficit down to the 334. Next one is, following my meeting with all of the department heads, we were able to find an additional 127,000, 28,000, and we were able to reduce the deficit even further. And then the next slide shows my final review of the budget to bring us to the ending surplus of $630 for fiscal year 2013. I'd be happy to go through item by item if the board would like, or I'd be happy to answer, or department head would be happy to answer, any questions that you may have on any of the items provided.
You done here?
Yes.
So at this point, we have a proposed budget the village manager has presented us, which is basically a balanced budget to the tune of $630 to the good. Trustees in the board has had this material to review, so I thank everyone for putting in the time necessary over this. So at this point, I would ask any trustee who wants to raise a question on any of these issues, please do so.
I have just a general question. Do you think we could just go through it page by page? Because I bet people have different questions. Some of them we might go through really quickly.
You mean not the progression?
Oh, you're talking about the whole, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the whole budget.
Or the...
Michael, were you talking about just his presentation?
Well, we're talking about the progression. I mean, we can go through the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have questions on the budget. I thought you were talking about the whole document as we got.
Excuse me? So, we have no questions on the budget that's being presented to us. Are there questions, trustee Sussman, impact what's in front of us, or are these just questions that you want to have?
Yeah, I just thought we could go through the deck. But I, um, okay, I just, I do have one question here. You have, this is dated 218, 206, 657, which you have a priority surplus or a change?
918.
918.
24. And then the final, my...
Oh, I see, I see. I've got it. Okay. Sussman, please. Got it. Okay. Thanks, Eric.
So, if anyone has any questions on the progression analysis that Peter has given us, Jean, do you want to raise some detailed questions on some of the budget items?
Yeah, I just wanted to... People might have questions. I thought maybe we could just say, is there a question on page one, question on two? But then there are four questions...
Why should there be pages that you have a question on rather than go through?
Well, other people might have questions.
Or they can, or what pages they want to...
Okay, but are we in to answer those four, right? Evaluate increasing ambulance rate and all that kind of stuff, too? Do you want to do that first or afterwards?
Well, it's part of the budget, so if you have a question on what's in there already ahead, why don't you raise the question to me?
Okay. They're not huge ones, or if anybody else has some.
Well, I have a question. Just to start on the revenue end, motor vehicles sales, which is one of three of revenues, we anticipate $553,000, which is fairly consistent. You know, I, you know, we have some of the highest fees in this village for motor vehicles, you know. My question is, is it fair to charge certain types of motor vehicles the same rate as we charge all motor vehicles? So, in other words, we have motorcycles that we charge $95, that has a special class, that has a, so we're able to categorize them. We also have antique vehicles, which has an A license plate. I'm not talking about antique vehicles that have the regular license plate that can be driven all year round, but antique vehicles that have an A license plate can only, I think, be driven 2,500 miles a year or something like that. And I'm wondering if we, you know, could, should those two classes be reduced to another rate? Then I'll bring it up, and you can, because I believe it's, it's, I think, fees, we need to charge fees, but fees also need to be fair. And I think in those two instances, motorcycles and antique vehicles are only used at best six months out of the year. So I'd like to know what kind of impact that is.
That's a fair question. We have had this discussion on this board prior, and the decision always was to not carve out exceptions, to do it across the board, whether it's antique vehicles, motorcycles, senior citizens, disabled persons, veterans. The village manager makes requests on a regular basis for exceptions. The board's policy to date has been to not make those exceptions.
Well, there's a new day.
As opposed to President Forman's comments, administratively, it would cause additional hours. We would definitely have to have an additional temp come in because it's a classification, so it would take longer to process versus the flat rate across the board where we're just issuing vehicle stickers outright. Also providing proof for those said classifications, so administratively, there would be additional work that needed to be done. Not saying that it couldn't be done, but it would take longer. And then also with regard to revenue, if we're stating that our revenue is going to remain the same, then where do we make up that additional revenue? Increase the rates for other residents that have regular vehicles?
Well, I'm not asking to increase the rates for other residents. What I'm asking is, first of all, I respectfully disagree with the fact that this would be hard to miss, or because motorcycles are a completely different tag. It's a metal tag versus a paper tag, so it's completely different. And antique vehicles have a special designation on their license plate. It's a whole completely different license plate, so I don't know how much more, I don't think we have to hire more people to hand out metal tags. Maybe with the antique, there is something else, but do we have an idea on how many motorcycles we have in this village?
I would have to check. I've spoken, because this has come up throughout my duration with the village, to the person that actually does most of the administration of the vehicle stickers, and it would make it, I understand your point with the tags being separate from what, the stickers, but just noting, adding it up, it just would take longer, making sure that you're updating records correctly, updating incorrectly, deponching what the fee is, just those small little things that add on minutes to processing something that is relatively straightforward.
Is this something that we could bring back to the board if the board wanted to discuss that policy change, on what it would impact, what the dollar impact would be?
How hard would it be for staff to give us the memo, letting us know perhaps what the impact would be dollar-wise?
I think motorcycles would be easy, because that's a separate category. Antique vehicles may be more difficult.
Well, I mean, basically, a vehicle with antique plates, I mean, you can see by the plate number that it's an antique vehicle, generally speaking.
I mean, it would take, it would take some time for staff, because it would have to be...
It'd be a digital tool.
Yeah, right. It wouldn't be an electronic...
Yeah. I'd just like to go on the record. We've had this discussion almost every year, even predating you, Lonnie, and I am not in favor of changing the way we issue, the way we issue stickers. So I just want to say that in case a majority of the board agrees with me, then there's no work to be done by staff, that's all.
Anybody who doesn't agree with trustee Sussman, other than you?
Lonnie always.
Well, I would think that motorcycles would be very easy to tell, so I would think that that...
Okay, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not in favor of changing that, so if people are not in favor of it, then I'm not certain the work should be done. That's all I'm saying.
Do I hear anybody else that would like this project undertaken impacting the budget?
I'd like to know the impact.
So we have five members who do not want this project undertaken to be moved, so we will not do this at this point. So, it's always something you can look at for 2014.
I don't know if I heard from Ben Jim or...
I didn't hear anybody expressing opinions, so I'm fine with leaving the policy.
Yeah, I agree with Jean. I think we should leave it just the way it is.
You have next, Nigel, get someone else.
What would help me is when I look at the various reductions that you've given us on the progression, it would help me if I could actually hear a description of what these things actually are in a global sense, so then we can kind of, instead of trying to go through a seriotically complicated here, just like a roster of what these things actually are.
The, well, I guess, the first one, the property tax update, that's basically following what the assessors office is getting more current updated figures, so that's what that changed was. The decrease in sales tax, that's just staff's review historically where we budgeted, where we ended up, and Jessica and I are of the same thought that we prefer to be conservative and at the end of the year comes in higher than we anticipated, that's more to the good. So that's what that was. The franchise fee and income tax update, those are both, again, as we got further along, we were able to get more reliable information that allowed us to make that assumption that we will come in at those numbers. The update to the wireless alarm piece, that was a review of, when it was brought to the board, what we, since we brought it and it was approved by the board and we started implementing the alarm system, we came to realize that there were a number of accounts that were included in possible revenue that shouldn't have been included, and those were primarily village-owned properties, so that's, we made that adjustment there. The update for the program fees for the date camp, since this was our first year doing the date camp, we, after sitting down with Ron and going through the program, we felt that based on this year's results, that next year will be even better, and so that was, that accounts for that number. The comptroller program, that is based on something that we'll be bringing back to the board at the next meeting for approval, or the week, the board already approved that. The comptroller program is something that the board entered into that where you are going to partner with the comptroller to try and recoup lost penalties and fees. The reduction in the interest income, that also was, again, a review of historical data, what we budgeted and what we ended up coming in. We, Jessica and I both felt that we needed to branch it that number down to be more representative of where we've been in the past few years. The update to the cable commission request, that is a request that came in from the cable commission for some additional items that they wish to purchase for the overall service that is provided, which then led to the department review items. The first is a reduction in professional development in police, and basically, what happened is after the original budget, and we had that 334 deficit, when we met was department heads, we looked at each of their line items, we looked at what was budgeted, and then where they came in at the end of the year. We also discussed what they were hoping to accomplish in fiscal year 13, and then based on that, where we could reduce, we went ahead and reduced. In this case, the professional development, that has to deal primarily with conferences and some training. The reduction in personnel cost for police is not a reduction in level of employees or a reduction in salaries. This was primarily due to a number of employees opting out of the village's health plan program, as well as one of our dispatchers who was at a higher salary left the village, and we replaced her with a new dispatcher who is paid at a lower rate. She is working her way through the steps, but we will realize the savings by that. The update to the dispatcher's E911 cost sharing, this is something that we've been wanting to do for a number of years. Jessica came here, we finally were able to do this, is that we're going to charge some of the personnel costs for the E911 center to the E911 fund. It's common practice in a number of municipalities that have dispatch centers to offset some of their personnel costs by the fund that is providing the service to it.
And Peter, that's the item we discussed at our last meeting?
Correct, yes. And the E911 board has agreed to that charge to the fund, so they've provided the board proofs that that changed, and the E911 board is also agreeing. The reduction in telephone service costs for fire...
Based on historical...
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's another one where based on historical analysis, we branched it that down. The next one is decrease repairs and maintenance of fire, and that was an item where we, again, looked at the historical trend, but we also discussed with the department heads, and all of the department heads knew what our deficit was, so when we met, they were all aware of the fact that we had to find cuts somewhere, so what we did is we talked and we tried to find areas where the cost wouldn't have a significant impact to either service or department needs, and so that's kind of what led to some of these reductions. The next one is the daytime staffing, that's an increase, and that basically is, our current practice is, we have daytime management between the hours of 8 and 4 PM. Based on an analysis done by Chief Nemora, we realized that between 4 and 6, due to ship changes, we didn't have optimal coverage during those two hours, so in order to provide a faster response in the event that there was an emergency, we felt that making that change would protect the village and the residents, and that's why that's in here. The next one is the paid-on call, that's basically because we lost some paid-on calls, we had to add, so that we have the optimal number of individuals in the event that we have an emergency callback, and so before that we plan to hire this, the training that will... And so before that we planned to hire, this is the training that will be part of, of that. The update to all other higher salaries and wages, this was again, sitting down with Chief Kamora and some of the changes that he made as far as the breakdown of what the individuals were being paid for. Some of those were confusing, so Chief, Chief Kamora was able to kind of condense it into a more understandable form. We're still going to work on it, it's still a work in progress, but this is part of, of, by doing that, we were able to realize some savings there.
I didn't follow that.
Okay. A little bit has to deal, deal with how we were tracking what individuals were being paid for.
And part of that's restructuring too.
And part of it's restructuring. The next one is reduce equipment replacement. Now, this is another one where it was historical, but also is that an item in there that, that we deferred? A, a year, a piece of equipment? I can't remember right now.
Cool.
I can find out. For the wise of me, do you know what's written on it?
It was just historical information, whether or not they default applying on certain equipment replacement, just the typical annual operating equipment replacement. Not seeing capital in quantity, but just the regular replacement of various related items for.
And then the, the next one, the decreased funding of supplies and services, that's again, looking at historical data as well as this has to deal with, one of the full-time employees did not elect to participate in the, in the villages health plan. The next is the personnel costs for the day camp and that is what we anticipate as our, our costs, our personal costs for the day camp. And that's basically based on our review of this year's program and what we anticipate for next year. The increase in budget request by the museum, this relates to a donor drive that they are planning to do in 2013. And the 5600 is primarily for supplies that will be used to help them put that donor drive together as well as recording and all of that other stuff. And then the reduction in personnel costs for public works, that's another one, again, historical review of, of the operating as well as changes to health plan coverage by an employee. And by doing all of those things, that brought us to 206. So even after that, we're still, still kind of like, oh my gosh, where else can we go find some more money without impacting, without having to come back to you with a reduction in personnel headcount? So fortunately, we were very, very fortunate in that Chief Kamora, and I give him credit for the one who did this, he was able to go back to the pyramid contract, which is set to expire at the end of this year, and get the pyramid contract to hold the line for next year and then have subsequent increases in year two and three. But the contract does allow for the village to conduct an R F P in, in 2013 and then to, to identify whether or not in 2014 we will continue with our current provider or switch to a more cost benefit provider. So Spencer kind of helped me out tremendously by finding this hundred thousand dollars in, in, in savings.
And their contract will come before this board for the end of the year.
They plan to bring it back to you next Monday, I think regularly toward me. The next item is reduction in professional services and professional development, community development. And that is basically a, we were planning on purchasing code books in the next fiscal year, but in speaking with Bob and looking at our current code books, we were able, we made the decision to hold off until the next year on those thoughts, as well as a reduction in some of the professional development conferences for that department. The next one is, this is when it was kind of crunch time. So I kind of went back to each of the, the departments and I informed them that I was going to be doing a second review of, of their line items. And it was a further reduction to those various line items that even before this part, were already kind of thin to begin with, but we scraped a little bit more meat off the bone so that we could bring in this balanced budget. So the, this one on finance, information technology, my office, police administration, and public works, we're basically looking at office supplies, professional services, and just looking at those and taking a little bit more off of that. And then that kind of brought us on a little bit more. And then that's when we looked at repairs and maintenance for public works. And that is primarily, this is the one line item that if there was any, anywhere else I could find the money I probably would have touched, and this deals primarily with our facility maintenance. And, and has a number of projects, a lot of them are our projects. I probably have told him, we need to do this, this and this. And it's basically for Fire Station One, evaluation of the roof on Fire Station One, facility maintenance at the recreation building, facility maintenance issues here in this building. And so what we've done is we still have a number of projects that, that are budgeted in that line item, but this 10,500 was really to give us a little bit wiggle room in the event that certain contracts came in a little bit higher than we probably anticipated. So that's what that, that my run was. This 10,000 is a reduction in the cyclical tree trimming line item. We were able to, to keep a big chunk of the cyclical tree trimming in the budget, but we needed to find money somewhere else. That was the last cut that, that we were able to make. And then the next items were basically the, the revenue that the museum is anticipating will, that they, that the village will receive based on their donor drive. A change to the ambulance service rates, which will be on your agenda next week for, for consideration. And then the utility tax rate, which again is also going to be on the agenda for your approval and then, or first reading. And then also the, the decision to, or included in here is, is use of some of the Earl's Circus to bring us to the positive 603 that is included here.
The ambulance service rates and utility tax rates, those require ordinance amendments?
Yes.
The, the update in the museum revenue, you've increased their, their budget, they're, they're up to 17,000 dollars. They, they're sitting at roughly 73,000 dollars. How much of the, how much of the money that they are actually sitting at are they using to generate this income? Or is this all, all the, the money that the 17,000 were given is what I would consider the co-mingle money, the money that could be used for a police fire, whatever?
The 17,000 is a co-mingle.
Why would, why would, it seems strange to me that we would use co-mingle money for them to then go give donations, for those donations then to come back and be restricted money. I, I find that as, as odd, I, I just.
I, I agree with Joe, I just, I'd like to understand what the money is being raised for. And then I really would like to understand why general, general fund is giving, again, the museum has restricted funds, the lawyers who are not here tonight said that we can't make policy on those restricted funds, and yet we're being asked to give money to the museum so they can raise more money for restricted funds and we're not going to get the general fund money that we're giving them for fundraising back? I, I, I'm kind of surprised by that. And I'd like to start with the discussion, Joan, of what the money is going to be used for. And then why, if it's restricted money, why we're giving them money for fundraising that we can't use?
Why don't we start with, yeah, we're all sort of bad.
That one?
Yeah. I think, I think if we resolve that one, or the other, the second, the first point, Rob.
Maybe, I mean, I, I don't know what the reasons are, there might be, yeah, either way, it's one mark, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd actually like to, to answer Joe's question too, I think it's a salient question. Why are we using general fund revenues?
It was your request made by the commission.
This, this I have before, because I'm not sure I probably, I just might have one part of that. So the 17 grand that's in the expenditure breakdown, breakdown, that includes, that includes the 5,650 increase?
Correct.
Yes, that's what they normally are budgeted and then the additional five.
So the 17,000 includes that 550, okay, sorry, Rob.
So the request was made by the commission?
Commission.
Okay. Mark, do you want to start with why? Why are they using general fund?
I would like to answer though.
Lonnie, you're the representative, right? Why, why is the general funding used to support restricted fundraising?
They, they want to do kind of more sophisticated exhibits.
That, that doesn't answer my question.
Well, I'm answering the question as to why they would make it, why they were trying to run fundraisers.
But why are they asking the village for money to support fundraising for money that we can't touch? For, that we have no influence over?
I didn't ask that question, did I?
So the money that they're trying to raise with, is for exhibits?
It's, it's to, it's for their strategic point.
Well, those are two different things.
No, because exhibits are part of their strategic point.
So they've done a strategic plan which.
It's part of their outreach to the village. For instance, they, they've run, the last couple of times they did fundraisers, the purpose was to get the Westwell House ready for exhibit. So they, so they have an exhibit now, which they have had and haven't changed. And so what they want to do is, I mean, some of the things that, that they're talking about doing is, is kind of a more sophisticated type of exhibit. And that's part of what they, I mean, that's part of what they want. I, I didn't, I didn't ask them what specifically are you doing this for?
Did you ask them why they want village money instead of using their own?
Well, I mean, when you're saying village money instead of using their own, I mean, it all is, it's restricted to their use. It's restricted, the 73,000 dollars is in essence for, for them to use for their general purposes.
Right, fundraising.
Which would be fundraising, which would be whatever they want to do.
I, I see, I, I don't understand.
So what, so this budget, so here's my point, is that there's a 5,600 dollar budget request by the museum that comes out of the general fund.
Okay. The chair and I sat down with Jessica exactly ascertained restrictions concerning the 73,000 dollars, the breakdown of the, between, between funds that they raise by selling things and funds that, that are part of the Illinois fund. So, go ahead, Jessica.
Historically in the past, this date back, dates back, as far as we can go back, was actually 15 years. Any donations that were received by the commission were put into this, this account essentially through Illinois funds. And so those monies remain restricted. But any operating income, for example, for any programs, tours, even sales of calendars, sales of the various ornaments and things of that, or even the book, is actually going as operating income and that goes into the general fund. And donations that they receive remain restricted or any type of endowments, et cetera, that the commission receives is restricted.
And I think, but I think that also, Joe's question and Gene's follow-up is, we're basically swapping general fund dollars in and what comes out is restricted dollars. Right? Because they fundraisers are using unrestricted general funds to fundraise, which gets turned into restricted dollars that we, that, that can only be used for.
Correct.
Okay, so, so it's, okay, sorry, what?
In the same turn, they also do various tours and actually derive, not maybe to the same level that they do with their donation drives, but they do derive revenue annually from their various programs that goes straight to the general fund. Now, if you're asking if the general fund somewhat subsidizes the commission, the answer is yes.
I would, I would rather let the museum have all of their income. If they run tours, if they sell calendars, you know, this wonderful book that Lonnie and Connie wrote, anything that they do and they, they drive income from goes into their restricted funds and they live off of that. And in return, the village gives them the use of the wellhouses and the utilities and no, no co-mingled funds.
So then isn't that five, that's like a private or.
It's like probably 501(c)(3). Yeah, that, that's the way I think the museum should be, should be running, probably the way most museums, if I'm.
And if the rev, as though we're doing Parks Rev now.
In a way.
Because when they, when they generate program fees and all that, that goes into.
In, in a way, so that the Parks Rev does have a letting where they don't, the, the museum will not have a letting.
I can put in terms of bookkeeping part, what you're suggesting is basically treating them like we treat Parks Rev.
Well, unless. Mark, can you, Lonnie, you want to share, I'm sorry?
It's been discussed, this 501(c)(3) business, the problem with doing that is that if you turn them into a 501(c)(3), then they have to kind of take ownership of the museum. So the village wouldn't own the wellhouses anymore.
No, that's the same, I mean, they wouldn't have to do that.
That's what, I mean, they would have to, I mean, that's the way I understand it. It was, it was discussed a couple of years.
It's the crunch.
Actually, they wouldn't own, they wouldn't have to own the physical building.
They would have to own the contents of it. So like, you know, there's 16,000 objects in a thing, the village would have to sort of cede to them. We wouldn't own it anymore. That's the way I understand.
The 501(c)(3) I think is beyond.
Yeah, I'm just.
But I still want, she'll try to get my head around this. So they want 17,000 dollars primarily for fundraising, whether it's.
Right.
And then this, you know, the 6,300 dollar update to museum revenue. So are they saying that they're going to raise 23,300 dollars? So they're going to raise the 17 back and then the 63, or are they saying that they're going to raise 6,300?
That's just updating their current, their revenue from 2012 to 2013.
So they're going to spend 17,000 dollars to raise 6,300?
Well, there's other things in there, 70,000.
But they're going to spend 5,000 dollars to raise.
Yeah. Yeah, because I was going to say, even if you only take that number. So if they're, you know, if they need 5, you know, 5,650 dollars to do their fundraising and they're making 6,300 dollars, they're going to raise 650 dollars?
Yeah, 5,000 dollars is what they're adding with their.
This doesn't, I, I don't remember, of course, it sounds like we have questions that.
3,000, I'm sorry, 3,000 is what they have specified for fundraising, but that, that's not 5,000.
But you said it's 50% fundraising rate.
Should we defer this until we can have somebody from the stroke of the commission come into our question?
I think that I agree, you should leave it as this. I mean, historically, the last time that they did fundraisers, they raised 8,900 dollars. If they want to spend three, they raised eight or nine, I say let them do it, don't make a change.
An organization like that that would be rated by one of the funds, one of the donor forums or something like that? An organization like that, that would be rated by one of the donors forums or something like that? They would be rated as, "Don't give them money." Absolutely, you would spend thirty-three percent of what you're going to raise?
I would pay very little.
I don't care if they end up making ten percent. Whether they make it good, well, then if it's good, then they should be using their own money to make it.
I think Joe's point is more to point-
Exactly.
I think that's where we also may come in, is if you're raising restricted funds, use your own funds to raise.
I guess, I'm sorry.
And Ben raises, or Joe brought a question, well, maybe their revenue should be capitalized within-
A lot of heads off.
And that's a separate question, maybe, that's a question for now.
I was thinking about what Mark said about which order, mine had a couple of questions on which order. And I guess I was asking about what the money was going to be used for. And Lonnie, you said that, and you sort of answered-
You?
Well, I guess I'm thinking that if a commission has a strategic plan and they're asking the village board to support that strategic plan, then you would think that we would want to hear from them.
We did.
But this is the same one from a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Well, I have problems saying, "Let's allocate three thousand dollars to raise six thousand dollars." I disagree with that, that's for sure.
I don't have a problem with that, but if you do, then you do.
Part of that strategic plan goes to, I was at the last historical commission meeting where they approved a two-to-three thousand dollar expenditure to study turning the water tower into an observation deck. Now, whether any of us agree that that's a good or a bad idea, they also have in here twenty-five hundred dollars per grant, right? And you go out and try to get this grant. And I think the bigger discussion is, is let's just say that they go out and they get a two million dollar grant, three million dollar grant, and it's a sixty, forty, or ninety, ten. Is this board willing to put down three hundred, four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to turn that into an observation deck? And that's kind of leads to what Jean spoke to the other day, is we need to have a bigger discussion with police, fire, recreation, and the museum and say, "Okay, if we have these buildings, we can't do an observation deck at the water tower because we would end up displacing recreation. Recreation would then have to move into the youth center. Well, that's a million five, give or take, to do that. And if they do that, that building is not, you know, is not offline. That building is used by three firemen. It is used by five counties to do training. It's used by the police to do their physicals. They have storage in there, they have the police cars parked there. Is it a safe place for our children to be walking in and out of the building? They have police cars and ambulances around it? Is that building better used as a new police station? Is that building better used as a new fire station? Or should we be looking at, is our fire stations are fifty years old? Should we, should, now is the time we should be looking at consolidating our fire stations to one side or the other on the tracks? Putting our money to that? And say, "Okay, here's the shovel-ready plan," like you mentioned the other day. If there's more money coming from federal and you have to have a shovel-ready plan, here's a shovel-ready plan that we're ready to go with. And this plan then is the linkpin to then work the rest of the way down. But to work from here to here is just wasting money. This twenty-five hundred dollars that they want to spend for grant writers and the two thousand dollars that they're spending, even though it's their money, that they're spending for, to see if it's feasible, is a waste of forty-five hundred dollars. The eighty-five hundred dollars, ten thousand dollars that we want to spend to look at whether the youth center can be turned into a rec center, is a waste of money. And to, we know where the top is. We can't deal with the bottom. And I think that's what we need to do, is what we need to do is we need to get all their partnerships together and say, "Okay, this board needs to look forward, we need to plan. And what do we want to plan to do?" And, you know, I heard before that, "Don't let the good get in the way of the great." Or, "Don't let the great get in the way of the good." I'd rather let the great get in the way of the good. And let's, you know, by taking the good, we're settling, I don't want to settle. I'd rather do what is best. And that is a long-range plan. If this thing, if it is a new fire station, then let's look at it. If it's a new police station, then let's look at it. If it's a new rec center, then let's look at it. And I think that's what we need to start. And to fund these, to fund these little baby projects, I think is a waste of fun.
The purpose is to bring back facilities and planning and so on. And this, where maybe you said, and I agree with that, I take it all to the points. We're talking about the 2013 operating budget. So what's the impact of historical commission budget on our 2013 budget? So maybe you want, maybe you want to find some way of not putting general fund money to that issue. I don't want to get into, now's not the time to have that discussion, the duties have. So how much in this budget is attributable out of the general fund goals to support historical commission?
Seventy-five.
And how much of that is funds they generate themselves?
They have three thousand for fundraising events.
Six hundred for candidates.
Six hundred for calendars. Five thousand for brochures.
These are all revenue, aren't they?
Yeah, these are all expenses.
We're talking about revenue?
All revenue.
Well, sure, because how much are they going to the point of let them spend their own money that they make? How much money are they generating on that 2013 budget that's going towards that seventeen thousand? So what, what are that seven? What's our, yeah, what are the, yeah, what are the, yeah? So forty-six is coming out of the general fund? No, forty-six is what they're contributing in revenue.
About that seventeen.
Just in general, they project in 2013, and their surplus is seventeen.
Seventeen.
Like, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, forty-six hundred is how much they're going to contribute.
Is what they're operating income is for next year?
I have a question about this. I don't think this board-
Hey, John.
I don't think this board has decided that it doesn't want to support the historical commission out of general revenues. That wasn't the purpose of my question. My question was more, there is a strategic plan out there. I don't recall that some of the items in what we've seen for tonight are in that. At least one of them is in that strategic plan. We're being asked to support a fundraising initiative where the cost per dollar is thirty-three cents. Without understanding, we haven't heard a presentation, we haven't heard an explanation. I did not mean to imply that we shouldn't be giving them money. What I meant was, we're giving the money, but we don't understand why or what the result's going to be. And I guess my preference would be because this money is already part of the balanced budget. If we just sit, until we hear a presentation or see a plan, that we just kind of say, "Let's hold off." That's all I meant. I didn't mean to imply no money or it should be a balanced budget. I mean, it still is commission, right? We still support commissions. So don't misunderstand that, I just don't get it, that's all.
And to my point is, I think it's the twenty-five hundred dollars by, and they can talk about this whole grant scheme of projects, was because they have twenty-five hundred dollars to look at grant. Is that a wise expenditure for village funds? And I don't believe it is, until we have that overall conversation, that's where I was getting at. So I would say, I would take twenty-five hundred dollars anyway. And I agree with Jean, I have a hard time giving three thousand without me coming back to the general fund and everything going back to the restricted funds. If they feel, if they feel good about their program, about their fundraising, let them fund the three thousand and then they can keep all the progress.
Well, Jessica said someone come back.
Not from the, not from the-
No, someone won't come back to the general fund?
Forty-six hundred is budgeted as a operating revenue for next fiscal year.
But of the three thousand of the, of the income coming back from their fundraising, that would all go into the-
Correct, yes. Five thousand, maybe, but I guess my preference would be to ask the chairwoman or some of the members to come and just talk to us about it and we put a star on it.
Talk to the chairwoman, what?
About what, what the, what you're asking for, Lonnie, and what the strategic plan is. It all of a sudden has money for an art.
If anyone gave you a presentation for a fundraiser, either asked for that, they'll ask. When they did it in the past, they went out there for it. Jean come and ask your permission to do it?
Jean's point is, Jean's point is, well taken, I think we seem to have some legitimate questions here about what it is this money's going to be used for. And she was raised about restricted versus unrestricted funds, I think those are valid questions.
So can I, just to get the dollar, I'm still in numbers here. Seventeen grand, but then they're going to generate forty-six hundred, it's going to go back into the general fund? So what they're really asking for from us is what for?
Correct.
Well, no.
There's five thousand.
You said five, but they're supposed to raise, or what they're, no, that's restricted.
That's a kind of question.
Right, because again, I don't a priori say, "No, we shouldn't be giving them money out of the general fund." But I would like to understand what the use of the money will be for.
How do you want to move forward with us, want to gain some more information in order for you to keep going with this budget?
Well, we have to reach out to the chair of the historical commission and capital fund in the next meeting.
I would recommend taking out three thousand and the twenty-five hundred dollars until they adjust the value of those two funds.
I think the whole thing should just be put on-
Well, to the point, to your point, Jean, about we're not looking to not support the commission for fundraising aspects.
I think there's more, I think to Jessica's point, why, we haven't talked about the policy implications of opening up the top of the water tower. Why are we, it's related to what we talked about when you said to Mark. We talked about Mark's asking for, Mark, the village, Peter asking for money for the youth center. It seems to me it's the same kind of discussion that we're not really ready until we talk about the results of this work that's been going on, like, and we sort of line up everything. And then we see, well, should we be, is this, this may fall to, it may end up being at the top of the list. But until we can take a really broad view, I just think it's, we're, it's, we're making decisions not based on overarching policy, we're not based on an overarching strategy. And that doesn't make sense. I don't think we can one-off projects.
I share the concern about funds, restricted versus unrestricted. So I think your suggestion is to leave this as is for now and bring some information in our next meetings from the historical commission that we can use to discuss their budget requests.
We're not voting on anything tonight, anyway.
No, but we're trying to give the staff directions so they can see you want to do that.
We don't have to take it early in, because we're not voting on it.
Right, right. Well, you could do, we could make that decision.
Right, but they're just, I'm not-
My point is to say, "We won't give that direction." Continue, continue it as it is. Only for some more information now.
I actually want to say, this is about the national commission, that all we're doing is trying to ascertain this expense. It is, can you break people up? They're not saying that, in order for us to make a decision whether or not it's part of presumably a broad playing exercise with, once we get a senior report. I mean, we can't make that decision without knowing if it's even feasible. So this is just to say, can it be done? If it comes back and says it can't be done, then it shouldn't even be part of our broader discussion. So that's why we're doing this now, for the pressure for that discussion.
I'm getting the impression-
That money, that money's already been spent now. That's not the money you're talking about now. That's the two thousand, three thousand dollars that they've already spent out now. And you know, they always, I mean, take a look at what they've spent versus what they've requested for the last few years. They've never spent anything near what they've requested. This grant writer thing is just in there so that, hey, if this report comes back real positive and the village board has heard this bigger discussion when you're out and wants to do this, it's already in the budget to do. That doesn't mean they're going to go do it. That's all that is.
But I'd like to note that the cost of that analysis is not from the general fund. It is being charged to the certain, to the main-
Right, the two thousand that they, yeah.
Can we move on to the next question or subject for discussion?
Has Peter made it through his list to keep track of writing the list?
No, they made it through the list, yeah.
I have a question. And this kind of goes back to our last few times when we talked about the Parks and Rec money and how we're going to track it. So when, up here where I see the update program, they do the day camp, the five thousand, two thousand, three hundred and fifty. And then the update personnel costs, I think that those things are offset against each other. We need that extra twenty-seven, five for the personnel management. So I'm still, I'm still confused how the Parks and Rec money is being tracked. Is that, is that, so whatever that difference is, with the twenty-six thousand dollars, that twenty-six thousand dollars is going, goes into the general fund. But it's under the Parks and Recreation Department, which is, which are restricted funds?
Okay, so as part of our audit process, sorry, and I'll make this as brief as possible. Essentially, what we do as part of the audit process is we review expenditures and revenues, particularly for rec as they have a restriction with regard to fund amounts, or assignment reference, sorry. And so upon that review, we figure out if there's a surplus or a deficit and we either will add on or we'll draw down on what the bottom line is with regard to Parks and Recreation. Historically, they have had a surplus, so that has added up. But we track it in our financial software with regard to certain accounting measures for our revenues that are attributable to them, as well as the department in and of itself in their expenses. Does that make sense? Clear as mud?
This is as simple as you can reason.
Essentially, we track, with our financial software, we are able to track the revenue that is derived for all of our various incomes separately. And then we can pull that information out, as well as the operating expense for those respective departments. And then head out to find out if there's a surplus.
Okay, so the surplus goes into that assigned line item in the process, right?
During the audit.
During the audit. And that's what's restricted?
It is an assignment, so we're splitting our statements.
And isn't that, isn't that the conversation you just had with the capital fund? So you're basically, while I'm looking at here, you're basically saying there's going to be roughly a twenty-six thousand dollar surplus for Parks and Rec that's going to, that's going, is going to be assigned.
Well, twenty-six thousand revenue based on the day camp, but depending on how all the other programs pan out, if they either break even or we offer the program, even though we might not make money, some of that twenty-three is going to be used to offset-
Just for the sake of, like, I'm trying to-
For the sake of this, yes. That twenty-three then would go into, during the audit process, would go into the assigned line item.
And isn't that what we said at the capital meeting, is that money can't be used for anything except capital? Isn't that the point of the forty-two thousand?
Not necessarily. For example, when the auditors were here and we were discussing this particular matter, how it's viewed is that property taxes utilized versus the use of these. So essentially, if they have a year which took a deficit, we would draw down on that particular assignment. Similar to the historical commission, similar to, I believe, their street donation or their restriction, etc. So that's pretty much how the assignment works. If you're utilizing it, you draw down on it. So for example, in our discussions with the capital projects, we'll be doing a transfer at the end of this fiscal year for them to utilize it, it'll be a drawdown on it.
Okay.
I'd love to just start by saying that I really applaud you, Peter, Jessica, and your direct reports for once again, really coming up with almost a barebones budget, certainly going back in the last couple of weeks and coming up with additional funds to provide us with a balanced budget. You've been doing that, you've done this now for the last three years, and your processor did it for a number of years as well. I am curious about the kind of risks that we face with this budget on the expenditure side because it is such a barebone budget.
Our hope is that the economy will begin to turn around and revenues may begin to increase. But if it doesn't, if our current practice will eventually, it will become impossible for me to reduce some of these items because by doing so, I will be directly impacting their ability to provide services to the community. And so in order to not do that, it will then eventually to that first year budget that I presented to you, which included personnel costs. I presented to you, which included personnel costs.
So, so this is an unsustainable budget.
Unless revenues begin to turn around.
Right, and there you have. I think that's important for people to note, that this is an, by giving you the directive of a balanced budget, current revenues and current expenditures, it's an unsustainable budget. And we've been saying that, I know that, but at some point.
But I, I think that's true in a year. We don't know what the revenues are going to be next year or the year we're going to have.
Well, we use our best forecasts, and we can look at the forecasts, and we know that we're not going to, we're not going to be getting this big boost.
I think you could forecast this downturn that we've just had. And, and secondarily, we're working with what we have in front of us, and I think they've done a magnificent job bringing us this budget. I'm just totally amazed.
But I guess I don't understand what you're saying, because they're still telling you it's a barebones budget.
I, I can see that. I can see that it is barebones.
Well, it has been a barebones budget, and it does present the risk.
Yeah.
And in the past three years, that barebones budget turned to surplus in all three years due to some increased revenues, due to expenses that can happen, and it's allowed the villages to accumulate a substantial surplus. The villages are envious of the position we're in to have that cushion to address specifically what you're talking about. You're, you're right, Gene, you know. We, we say revenues are going to start to pick up. Well, maybe they will, but as soon as they start picking up, unless the state will myself, there are problems. They're going to be grabbing those revenues before they ever come, come to this village. So there's a lot of pressures on it, and this village and this board has the benefit of their management of our funds over the past, you know, history of the village, so we do have some cushion, some surplus that falls back down. So I think that's, you know, my, the way I rationalize where the village manager and his staff is with budget today.
And I agree with what you're saying, Mike. One hundred percent, the last three years we have had a surplus, but that has not been an anomaly over the last three years. I've looked back all the way to nineteen ninety-nine, and we've had a surplus for the last twelve years, thirteen years, every year except one, we went back. Some years we've had a surplus of a building. So to say that, you know, it's been just the last three years is not necessarily one hundred percent true. It has been something that, that, that a, a ongoing occurrence in this village due to, I think, primarily the fine job of our, our, our directors, our, our department heads. I mean, I, I look at the budget of the CFP and say, see the money that we save, and there's, there's, there's fifty thousand or twenty thousand dollars in fire suppression. You know, there's nothing that I did that saved that fifty thousand dollars in fire suppression. That was done by the, the fire department. Or I see thirty thousand dollars saved in, you know, police training. There's nothing I, I didn't go to the police department and say, hey, we don't want your training budget. So, you know, it's, it's our department heads that saved this money, and they've done, they've done a remarkable job, but, you know, I think to Gene's point, there is going to be a time when the expenditures, especially because of healthcare and pension costs, are going to help out stretch our revenues, and at that time, this creepings, you know, quickly to us.
You see in the presentation that Peter gave us, it's tenuous to a certain degree with our personnel costs, because some of the savings there is because of options that employees made for healthcare. We don't have that, so.
Yeah, and I understand where the, the nipping at the budget has come from maintenance, from supplies, and the big concern I have is also from personnel development, because I think that that also is very important for staff for a couple of reasons. One is because we, well, two primary reasons, because we always want to have staff that are up on the latest of what's going on and are always learning. Not that our staff isn't, but that, that there is progress behind, and I think the second reason is that it's a, it's an incentive for good people to want to work in an environment where learning and development is encouraged. And if we always have a budget where we say that's going to go, then I, I don't want that to become a disincentive, because we do have a fabulous staff, and I just want to go on the record as saying that I think that that's a risk, to be in an environment where we don't have money for new programs, and where we don't have money for training, for, for that sort of non, non-monetary reward.
Any further questions?
I want to say you both did a very excellent job, including a lot of work in this budget. It's one of the finest projects I've seen since I've ever. And I said, and I asked you at this one, you guys did a lot of jobs.
It was just, it was just Jessica and I, and I.
Of course, and it's included in department heads for their work on it too, but, you know, the easy way out would have been, we've seen budgets presented to us with furlongs and layoffs, and, well, that's the easy way to balance a budget. That's not what you're seeing here. So you've maintained staffing, and I always say, we have to choose, I'd rather put our money with people than I think, and, and I think that you guys did an excellent job here in presenting the budget to us, and, and I am just fine with no changes to it as presented. That's how I feel.
I'm going to go back just a few, for a few of the items that you went through here. The first one has to do under the middle section, reduce equipment, replacement for fire, reduce other services and supplies for fire, and you said, you said in essence it was deferring replacement of some equipment. What, what exactly are we doing there? What is, what is it we're not doing in order to generate that?
I believe part of that deduction is historical data back in two thousand nine, an account that is reserved for repairing equipment that can be rather costly. And so historically, we haven't spent a lot of money repairing equipment the last past few years, so we knew it if we, Peter, we could reduce that account. Now, obviously, to Gene's point, there, there is some risk to that, because some of the, some of these items that we have, that, for example, our extrication hydraulic equipment, if that fails and we need to fix that, that, that's going to run into thousands of dollars. We have funds in that account for that, and I felt comfortable that we could use that to some, to some degree, so. But again, there is a little bit of risk to that, but the historical part of that account has been, you know, been.
So that's very interesting, sort of, Gene. So, because I, I heard that phraseology for a number of these items, that, well, using a historical analysis, but the historical analysis that you're basing it on has been, if what you just said, is the last few years where we have been actually maintaining kind of a, I, I think here.
Mr. Stappin, Mr. Stappin, Tom, Tom Stappin, please. Pete, we're trying to hear the chief right back here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Well, save those trees on Dela Play that are all marked. There's a whole row of major, major trees, and they got the X on it, and they'll be gone. That's why I came here to complain about it. We ought to try and save them before we cut them.
Mr. President, you know who this is?
He's, he's, he's on the way out.
Sorry, Chief.
So what was the thing? I mean, I'm concerned if, if we, if we were generating kind of abstract reductions here based on historical analysis, when the, when the time period that you're looking at has been not unsustainable, then I wonder about some of these numbers.
The period that we looked at was from two thousand eight to this current year. It is a gamble that, that we are taking, but we, we feel confident for, our fingers crossed that that piece of equipment will, will.
And in addition to that, just speaking for budgeting for over eight years, you don't necessarily want a budget for all its contingencies.
Correct.
If there is an outrage, we come to the board and we'll explain the outrage or the variance versus always putting contingencies into a budget and potentially inflating what your expenses are going to be.
I understand. You're conservative on both ends, on revenue and on expenditures. I understand that. I appreciate that.
So the next question was, what, now here's the reduce repairs and maintenance, those supplies, public works, and facility maintenance, and then you mentioned fire station roofs, red buildings, township. I mean, I understand the drive to having balanced budget and nice reserves, but on the other hand, I'm concerned that these are things that, that these are things that need doing. I mean, I mean, why are we, why are we putting these things off and continuing to go down the road if they need to be done now? Save them for simple tree trimming. I mean, I, I am very concerned with that. That, to me, that's a safety issue.
I'm not concerned about that at all.
Well, that's because you don't want the trees trimmed.
Well, yes, they, they get trimmed, and it used to be, up until recently, they were trimmed once in ten years, and now it's twenty-four. And so if that gets, gets cut back a little bit, the village, the sky is going to fall down then, and tree will generally fall on people, pets, or whatever you want to name it. So, you know, you're always wanting to spend more money. Where do, where do you want to spend that exactly, or where do you want the money to come from? You want it to come through reserves, so tell us how much, where do you want to spend that, so we can go home.
It just says a general statement. Wait, wait, just, just as a general statement, I mean, this is what you look to village manager and his staff and tell us where they can hold the line on expenses. You, you would always want more done. Everybody wants more done, and it's his job to tell us what needs to be done. And as Jessica says, said, said just now, if an issue comes up, you know, we very well may need to deal with the budget amendment in twenty thirteen if there is a problem, and we have the ability to deal with it. But you don't budget for that, those problems. I think that's the, the theory that they are following.
So no, I disagree. I think with all, with all respect, I think, I think that's putting, I think that's putting the others in the wrong place. We're the ones who told them to bring us a balanced budget. You have, we have forced them into this position of, to use his word, they can be scamps. That's not them. That's us.
These are the expenses that they wanted in the budget, that they've been forced to take out because, because the majority of the board doesn't want to use any of that money from the general fund. This is the original budget that we have in front of us.
Go ahead. I would just like to say, as far as the tree trimming goes, safety doesn't interfere in there. Safety comes first, no matter what we have to do, to keep the trees trimmed for proper distances of the roadways and the public areas and that sort of thing. The, and, and Ed, you'd like to speak to this too, but, but I think safety is number one in the foresters' mind, and I think your mind too, as far as tree trimming goes. Is that not clear?
You know, I, public safety is a paramount thing in every, everything we do. Employee safety, public safety. Most valuable things about tree trimming is to remove dead wood, shake, to shake it and train it, so that as they mature, they're, they're strong trees that will be durable in, in storms. But a lot of the tree trimming is looking for effective growth, you know, if we have cross branches, dead wood, of course, that will eventually fall. So it's, you know, it's really encouraging to help these strong trees. That's the way I look at it.
But we would never put any of our residents at risk by cutting back on trimming those things that had to be done.
We all, we, we have emergency tree removal where if, and this happens frequently during a storm, a branch will crack, some ends are significant branches, we automatically go out and take those down.
And also, I just want you to understand that there's a systematic pattern of, of looking at trees in different areas around the village on a rotating basis. Is that correct?
Exactly. Village is divided into eighty-five different sections, and that's the cyclical part of it, is one from section one, one year, section two, the second year, and so that they are inspected on a regular basis.
So there's really two components. One is training the tree to a nice shape, and also looking at things that could become problematic in the future, but, but the public safety issue is, is primary, correct?
Absolutely, without doubt.
Thank you very much. So what's the effect of this reduction in this cyclical tree trim? What effects do you have?
Well, we probably won't be able to do as much. We didn't do tree trimming in one year, I think it was two thousand eleven, so we are kind of playing catch-up a bit. But we will trim as much as we have funding for, and that's what we can do.
So if you don't have enough funding to take care of all the trees and have a safety issue, you can't do it.
Do you get, well, sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, that's the thing was, was being asked here. In the last year, you know, we had a tree fall, you know, lung on it. It was a private tree, but still was, it, it, it hurt a resident in fifteen states in the town. It was going to die.
That was a threat in the property line, by the way. There was a public element for that.
And then we just had a, a large branch fall right toward my house. It almost got wired down just a couple days ago. So, and that's, those happened in two thousand twelve. So there is a public safety element to reduction of tree.
Well, first of, if you could foresee that.
Right, if you could, right. First of all, you're, 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 you're like a politician there, and I don't know if there is. So, hold on, let me just ask you one question. If you, for some reason ran out of funds to do tree trimming, but you felt that there was safety-related tree trimming that needed to be done, would you come to the board and ask for those funds?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Part of this budget is we're to see tree removals, and that's for when those incidents occur, where a storm, a storm hits a community and a tree is cracked or something like that.
Okay. All right, I'm going to, actually, I want to circle back to something I've been saying.
One of the things I've treated really, and I know Ed personally identified a tree that was kind of on the other side of the parkway from my house, that we all thought looked really good, but he discovered a hole in it that you could drive a truck through. And, and I think the ongoing inspection of trees is going to, you know, lessen the, the danger that we have. You might speak a little bit to that, Ed.
That, I was out on sidewalk inspections and, you know, just, if so, you're looking around for different types of situations. That was a mighty pitalpa that, you know, was huge, was hurtful to learn that it had to be taken down, but we are able to, we have a device where we can drill through it and measure the amount of holding wood, and if, you know, a certain percentage isn't there, it has, and that was about the safety aspect. Conversely, further east on, on Scott's Wood, there was a large pitalpa that we curd the sidewalk around to help preserve it, so.
Near the church.
Yeah. So it's always a work in progress, and we're trying to protect public safety on one hand, build, grow strong, healthy trees, but still, all the time, there's, the number one priority is public safety.
Yes, and I, I just want to say that, that there is a vigilance program going on, looking for these things, and on an ongoing basis.
Also, yes. So, Mark, a question should be your.
I don't know, actually, I have to stay here.
So this, this ten thousand five hundred dollars on the, about reduce repairs and maintenance of public works, Peter, this is the same item you had urged, or you said there's a thing, or back in, or back in, is there?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to see it back in.
Mark, actually, now, I appreciate you saying that, because I, in looking at these numbers of the, of the nine twenty-five board meeting, if you look at the two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty, this, the, the money that was taken, that was taken out, the two hundred and seven thousand dollars, if you subtract thing, if you, if you put back in on all the maintenance, the big ticket items are what the staff actually did such a great job of, for instance, negotiating, Chief Camaro on the hundred thousand dollars, that kind of thing, but I would like, and even the fourteen thousand dollars for professional development are code books. They're not actually good development funds.
Some of it is.
Okay, well, I, I guess I would like to see everything added back in with, well, not everything, but where you look at professional services, training, and the.
Did Gene want you to read off what you're talking about, so Peter can make a.
All right, so my suggestion would be, obviously, if we look at that bottom paragraph, obviously, the paramedic contract stays as is. And I would like to see whatever the development dollars are, community development, put back in.
What are these?
Yeah, as opposed to the code. I understand your point about the code.
Did you say four thousand?
And I don't know, Chief White School above, you had taken out professional development too. I don't know how much of that should go back in. But, so I'd like to see the professional services and the development for finance. I'm a bit concerned that in finance, particularly all the creative, innovative, non-stop changes also that go on in finance, on the government regulations. I would hate to see that taken out. Not that you can't keep up with it.
Professional services, you know, the services, it's not, not professional development that has to deal with, since we now have a full-time, we can reduce.
All right, well, that's a professional development dollars I'd like to see put back in. Certainly, I don't know, Jessica, how you feel about the information technology. I know you put that into the operating budget as opposed to the capital fund anyway, but that's something that's going to get in the way of you being efficient, and I'd like to see that. And I'd like to see that put back in.
Well, the IT, I mean, that $5,000, that has to deal with... Right, for the servers and some of the software. Because we're currently going to be beyond RFP or R...
Oh, so you assume that's going to be the savings from the RFP?
Well, we're...
No, this is strictly... Okay, this is strictly equipped. Well, I mean, that's for you to, for the staff to look at. I'm not even trying to open this up for discussion, but I think police administration, and that's certainly what services are being reduced. If the chief could look at maintenance again with a P W. And if we, and if we put those back in, and for now, I mean, I'm questioning how much of the museum revenue we're going to be putting in, but we've agreed to let that go. It's not the bulk of the dollars by any means. And I would just like to see what the budget would look like if you went back in, put back in professional development in effect.
Can you add up those items so we can have them here?
So we're talking $4,000 for community development, professional development.
And note that this also implies that we're going to increase the utility tax. So I think that's something we should talk about too, because my sense is there might be a little bit of discussion on that one.
Well, we talked about this earlier next week.
We did.
So we feel like talking further about it.
Well, I kind of don't know the numbers because they're combined.
These are items now that we're proposing that we add back in for purposes of...
A lot of challenges, you mean, that challenge, so I just explained to you.
Yeah, no, no, this is, let's get them online for a while, so we can, sorry, I want to move forward.
Thanks, Mike. And then, Jessica, I know you have to do this every year, probably for me, but if you could talk about the implication of using some of the Irma, with the pros and cons that are using that surplus, that would be helpful too.
Essentially, with Irma, they do a calculation. If there is a root canal, full pons and it's not utilized, then we'll proceed a surplus that we can help them draw down on. Currently, we have approximately 36,000 that we have available to utilize. These are the preliminary numbers because we're having this meeting a month in advance. We don't get finalized numbers yet from Irma with regard to contribution of surplus. But essentially, we're, we've put into the budget what we believe our contribution will be for the upcoming year in addition to utilization of 50% of the current surplus that we have as of the end of last fiscal year.
So there's going to be no risk to using it unless we're really...
There's often, there's... There's no risk in prior years. Actually, I went back ten years, and majority of the time, we would utilize 100% of given years.
So we're thinking, sorry, usually about 50%?
Correct. So I'm okay with that. Depending upon what the, if we had any additional credit for 2012, and depending on the contribution, those numbers may need to be tweaked. We're waiting on Irma, and they're extra, so we won't be adding those numbers till beginning of October. That is essentially, and how the Irma contributions arrive is based on the village's rather new base, our experience, experience modifier. And so I won't bore you with all the additional details, but yeah.
I think that's a new expression, experience modifier. So that, those are the, yeah.
What did you add, you were talking about?
Yeah. Were there other ones you've got in public works, in their public works? You've got any of the training dollars?
What you said was that was...
For police, for...
I'm sorry? And then, we're all agreeing on the update to the utility tax rate?
I agree.
Okay. So it's...
So if we, is there anything further? Just one other question.
Yeah, yeah, there is. And Chief Camaro stepped out. I still am concerned about the issue I got about, about the three, increased repairs and maintenance required, reduce equipment maintenance required, reduce other services and supplies required. And I understand your point, Jessica, that you don't have a budget for every contingency. But in that sense, I don't think a budget with a gamble in mind, probably there's some middle ground there that they could be, they could be treated to.
Hold on a second. I just want to, I just want to clarify. So what are you really talking about? You talked about when you say, you know, we can't budget for contingency versus we don't want a gamble.
We go back to what I said a minute ago. If you, the budget that was originally submitted to us had this equipment, this maintenance, and these services included, but we went back and said, we're not going to give you the money. Go find some way to cut it. So, so, you know, I mean, yes, they have provided us with cuts, but they're responding to something that we're asking.
Well, but that's not what I...
But they're responding to the historical trend.
That's what I, that's what I heard.
And seeing that, that it wasn't necessarily something that was historically there that were taken out. It is something that, looking at historical trends, that the budget can be adjusted accordingly. If it comes up that a situation requires that we spend money, that a department head, the village manager, will recommend to the board that we go back and spend the money. That doesn't mean that in a conservatively expressed budget, both on the revenue and the expense side, that it has to be in there from the get-go.
So Ben, do you have, do you have anything else you want to consider? Ben, so we can move this discussion forward?
If I have a good chance to ask the chief my question. There's a few live items here. One is decrease repair maintenance for fire, $10,000. I'd like to know what that means. Reduce equipment replacement for fire, reduce other services and supplies for fire. If, what is telling us are. What are you, what are you not doing that you originally wanted to do?
Well, we have a fund that's set aside for repair of equipment. So a lot of that maintenance, part of that is that fund that comes from repairs. So again, there are a lot of costly items that we use in the department. I think into the hydraulic tools, which is, I guess, especially how old those tools are, and those are as old as the equipment. So 1611, our current engine is 1998. So in the event we have catastrophic repair, catastrophic meaning thousands of dollars, four, five, six, seven thousand dollars, for instance, I know our thermal engine camera acquired a 35, 37,000 dollar repair, and we had new one of those that cost around $10,000 or $12,000. And so when you start to add up, and that's just for one repair, you know, over a period of a year, there was, you know, we could incur quite a bit of repairs because obviously we use them, and whether it's in training or on a call. So regards to the hydraulic tools, you know, they're starting to age. We have an annual maintenance contract, which we have built into our budget to take care of that. That money, that reduction is for just in case repairs, if you will.
So, so why, why did you include this, this money? Why did you request this money in your original request group?
Well, it's basically as a contingency. In the event that that piece of equipment went down, we would have funds there to make the repair without having to...
So you mentioned a hydraulic drive.
Because of the ages.
So the jaws are life. When you, when you say if there's a catastrophic failure of the jaws of life, how would you find that out?
Well, it's based on...
Hopefully not, probably through extraction.
Correct, but that's why we have an annual maintenance part of that. But there's also, you know, we rely a lot on technical expertise on those mechanics. So if it's not on a call itself or from training, you know, it's during the maintenance and part of that.
Thank you, Chief. Which item were you preparing, Ben? The $11,000?
The $10,000, the $11,000, and the $9,000.
So are you proposing that they be put back in?
Well, you know, this is, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to put our departments on the spot. But it seems to me that, I just kind of, for lack of a better term, I think some of these numbers are supposed to get under duress. I mean, we are, we are demanding that they need a balanced budget. And I, and I think that they're really put in a very, almost an under situation of saying, well, you know, we understand as a professional, as a, our party, you think that you need this, but you know, we're not going to give you the money. So they're going to find some way to reduce this budget. And I just, I just, I guess what I'm most concerned about is, is having a realistic budget that accurately gives the actual numbers of what we need to maintain our village and provide our services. And I'm not, and I'm just not sure that this budget's doing that because of what I'm hearing.
And I guess I'd like to point out that budgets are always an estimate, whether it's on the revenue side or on the expenditure side. And the numbers that Peter put up in back of the chief are a little bit less than $30,000. That's less than a half of a percentage point of our total budget. That isn't even close to what an acceptable standard error would be for a budget. If we were to say, and put $100,000 back in, that's 2% of the budget. We're not talking about some huge building and some huge error number that's going to put this, that we can predict is going to put us way in a hole. And these are normal variation numbers that we're talking about. That's, I guess, why I'm a little perplexed about sticking to an absolute number, when there is no such thing as an absolute number at this point. There's no absolute number until the end of the budgeted year. And I would like to see some of this money put it, put back in.
Can we conclude on that, when Ben had these three lines? How do you want, I'm proposing maybe, and would you want them up? Is presented to us by the village manager?
I can't answer that question. I think that question would be answered by our, our village manager.
So then there's been change proposed by trustee Sussman on those items at this point? So then...
Well, no, we have, we're trying to propose with a budget. I'm not, I'm not here to talk about a policy debate and what type of budget you were going through. I, I respect your opinion, and I think you're entitled to that. I think you're wrong, it's just a different opinion. So we have four items at this point that trustee Sussman has proposed be added back into the budget.
Is there anything else that anybody takes exception with at this point, prior to the budget coming back to us in November? So then let's get a consensus on the board to add that, that $27,000 to be added back into the budget? I think we know what the answer is now, it starts with Jill.
Well, I still have, I still have a problem with $17,000 for the museum.
Well, the museums, that's, we've said that's coming back. We'll see, I'm talking...
When are we going to expect it in November or the next four years?
Ask Peter, if you're going to have the story.
We'll have to check, see what's available.
I guess it was not right with the budget.
It, right. It hasn't, because we're hoping to bring the budget for first meeting of the budget in November, so...
So how do you, what, are you... Let's, let's go forward on this.
We wait until then, Scott.
I think we should put the fire repairs and maintenance back in.
All three of those items? And where else do the funds come from for those items to add back in?
Come out of unsigned reserves.
No, I'm just asking what is...
You know where they come from. I mean, you know they come from unsigned reserves. You know that, that, that's a rhetorical question I have.
No, I want to hear, I want to hear what you're proposing for. It's something I can understand.
Well, where else would it come from? So you know it, you know the answer. And even within that, that's about 2%, 1% variation in the budget. I mean, one, you can't, that's the whole purpose of budgeting.
Well, it's a fair discussion, we're not disagreeing with you.
Well, your question, you knew where the money came from.
I just want to be clear what you're saying.
Well, then, you could, go ahead.
I think, and I think over the history of the last twelve budgets, we've always over, over emphasized our expenses and under emphasized our revenues. That's why we've always had, except one year, a surplus budget. So I think if we, to Jean's point, that if we run a deficit budget to this minuscule amount, there is a 99% chance that it will be covered, just like it had been covered next year, without going into that.
The $950 outright, Ben?
Did you ask him about the cruise repairs and maintenance? I'm sorry, I'm asking if we talked about the cruise repairs and maintenance.
Yes.
We did, that was the root, right?
And that's the one that you want to put back in, like the $10,500?
Is this all before the finalization?
Yes. I mean, it's not really finalized until we go down it anyway, right?
Right, right.
But I understand that one more iteration could be a...
Director Mount, yeah, you're inspiring us.
Jessica? I know this is your first, go around, like you gotta always bring it up there.
I think Brian can, Jeff. You sure?
Brian's filming the game here.
I have big numbers.
Would you want to...
After you add all this, subtract the 60.
Is there anything else in here?
I have something, sure, it's $48,000.
So it's $48,320.
Okay, so the point on the table now is whether to add those reductions back into the budget then, with a deficit budget at this point, for the village staff to work on at $48,320, right?
Which just, is still 1% of the total.
Joe?
I have a problem with that.
Mine?
I say no to any of those changes.
I do not favor these changes. Direction was balanced budget, work with that until staff has come back to a consensus. So I say...
I have a chief moron, I just, I just want to clarify one thing. The repairs and maintenance required for that $10,000 and $11,000 lineups. Again, those are, those are kind of just in case we need to replace those things, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And all is come back.
Right, okay. I am for leaving, I'm sorry, putting back in the public works maintenance. And I think that's it, Ryan.
Okay, trustee rounds? Trustee Sussman? Trustee Sussman?
Hi, and I just want to go on the record, I'm sorry, Mike. I just have to go on the record as saying that when, when we talk about a budget and expected expenditures and expected revenues, and I hear my colleagues, whom I have great respect, say that at this point in time, they want to quote-unquote budget, neutral budget, or where revenues equal expenditures, that just tells me that there's a lack of understanding about what estimates and what budgets, estimates, and expenditures and revenues really mean. Because we know from previous experience that we never exactly are on target either as, or we never, our revenues, our budgeted revenues never equal our actual revenues, and our budgeted expenditures never equal our budgeted expenditures. So to, to say that we're not willing to support the village and support staff for less than 1%, which is way within any kind of normal variation in a budget, tells me that people don't quite get it. And I'm very sorry to, I'm sorry to say it, but I'm just astounded that whatever kind of statement people think they're making, they're willing to do this to the, to the village.
So you have a consensus with the board to add back in the public works maintenance and not the other items?
You don't have a consensus, you have the majority of the board.
I don't want to get much of the dictionary now. So the point is add, add back in the public works maintenance, which is the $10,500, and not the other items at this point.
And then, would then, we would be using unsigned reserves for that?
That's right.
I don't think anybody wants to... I'm sorry.
I, I, I thought, or it made me have a mistake. I thought, I don't mean to speak for you, I thought you said you wanted none of those.
He did.
And you thought, I thought you said you wanted none of those. And I thought Jim said you wanted none of those.
He did.
And, and Mark was the one that said you wanted...
Right, so that, whether it's a majority or consensus, or whatever the word is, that's where that comes from.
Word people, paper, I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think that concludes the discussion on the budget, unless there's something we're missing. Peter, you have anything further? With that, I have a last, of course, that we've called a roll. But I guess I should get a motion in.
Don't be a second. So we don't, we don't have to do these elements?
No, he, he will come back to the board with those ordinance, utilities, tax, and annuals. The point is we're, there is a budget now, so we are implicitly coming to that. So today I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion by trustee rounds, second by trustee Valerie, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman?
Yes. $9,000.
Trustee Sally?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Shannon?
Aye.
Trustee Sandy? Trustee Valerie?
Aye.
Aye. And you and the meeting adjourned, the proximity meetings, I want to see two for a hundred eight.